I'm just waiting for the TV to come on. Okay. Okay, welcome all who have joined us here this evening. And we'll tell everybody at home that we have a council room full of outstanding young men, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. But this is the meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, June 10th. If we could all rise, I'll have an invocation lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right. And Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence, that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, state, and city. Guide and protect them, and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's my honor to be here and to do a special presentation in honor of the Eagle Scouts within the area. And I can tell you by the sheer numbers that we have here tonight, that we have been remiss, and we apologize as a city for not recognizing all of these accomplishments earlier. I will tell you, in this life, we all have a list of major accomplishments that are important to us. These young men have started a journey to accomplish those great things early in their lives. And if tonight's presentation is any indication of what's to come from these fine young men, we have nothing but positive things to look forward to. The accomplishment of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout is a major milestone in life. And I'm going to read, and if I could, I'd ask for Mr. Brad Baker, the Scout Master, and for Fonz Garcia to join me up here. Thank you all for joining me. Okay? What I'm going to do is I'm going to read one of these awards, and then I'm going to call out to the various people and have you come up and join us, if you would. Before we all leave, I know that council, every member of council is going to want to shake your hand. Okay? So what I'd like you to do is join me on this side, we'll hand out some awards, and then we'll have you all present it to the council as a whole. But basically, this will be from the city of Pecosin, and it will be in recognition of your outstanding accomplishment in 2012 or 2013 in achieving the designation of Eagle Scout. And if I could get, first, we're going to go through those that accomplished it in 2012, and then in 2013. So I'm looking for Mr. Luke Wolf. Mr. Tyler, I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew Tidwell. Mr. Justin Jones. Let me make it, make sure he gets that too. And then in the ones for 2013, Mr. Alex Greer. And another that was unable to join us tonight, but I want to mention his name, is Mr. Dana And then I want to read this one a little bit special. The last one, and this is a 2009 Eagle Scout, but Mr. Lawrence Garcia, can you join me here, please? Lawrence, yours reads a little different. Yours reads to present it to Mr. Lawrence Garcia in special recognition of your outstanding accomplishments for attainment of Eagle Scout in 2009, merit badge hold, record holder for Troop 28 with 58 merit badges, 37 more than required, and as the recipient of Virginia Tech's Davenport Leadership Engineering Scholarship. We wanted to have your special printed. As everybody at home can see, when you look at the small city of Pecosin and the number of Eagle Scouts that we celebrate as a community, we are quite blessed. Brad, would you like to address us at all?
Yeah, just a quick note. So I am the Scout Leader for our troop here in Pecosin. We meet at Tabernacle on Monday nights. We have 65 boys in our troop. 2% of boys entering Scouts make the rank of Eagle. It's not something that is just given to these boys. They work very hard. So it's definitely a very big honor for me to have led them through this effort, and the previous Scout Masters, and all the adults, and all the other boys that have helped them get here.
Yes, I'm Mr. Alfonso Garcia. I'm the committee chairman for the troop. I'm also very proud of these boys, that they have accomplished a great deal. A such a small percentage of Boy Scouts make it to this far, but only they don't, they don't just stop there. They continue their preparation for college. We have mechanical engineers, we have aeronautical engineers dressed for Purdue. We have representatives going to marketing, business, and so on and so forth. CNU, Old Dominion University, and the Gammet. So they continue just now their scouting career, but through this, it helps in their professional and educational career, and made definitely Troop 28 proud and Pecosin proud. Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Well done. Well done. That guy that got second class. Congratulations. 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 That's what you've done with the boys. I know a lot of hard work.
Congratulations. Thank you.
What's a big Eagle Scout? You got that many guys. Congratulations. Hey, thank you all for coming.
2% make it, and we have 16 in the community.
That's amazing.
That's gotta be a record.
Now we'll see if we can continue it. No pressure, Dave, but now Dave Callis is going to give us a word of special recognition.
That's a tough act to follow, Mayor, but I'll do what I can. Good evening, Mayor Hunt, members of city council, on both the national and regional media fronts. Last week was noteworthy for Pecosin, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on positive recognition for the city. On June 4th, we were notified that Pecosin was selected number three in the nation on the list of top 10 small towns for mobile entrepreneurs. It's worth noting that quality of life was a key selection factor in the ranking. Advancing levels of technology and Internet-supported services now allow a growing number of businesses to choose their home based on livability factors rather than traffic counts and location in a large metropolitan area. The top 10 rankings were prepared by nationally-recognized business expert Michael McAlawitz, former monthly columnist for the Wall Street Journal, and recurring business guest expert on CNBC's The Big Idea with Donnie Deutsch, NBC, MSNBC, Fox News, and ABC News. To quote Mr. McAlawitz, "You have the choice to do business from anywhere, anytime, including some of the most beautiful and mobile entrepreneur-friendly towns in the USA." As referenced by McAlawitz, he narrowed the national list to the top 10 towns where entrepreneurs can find loads of free Wi-Fi, have close proximity to restaurants, hospitals, hotels, B&Bs, coffee shops they call their office, and low cost for food, lodging, and whatever. He specifically noted that Pecosin is mobile entrepreneur-friendly, a small town with a big media presence, recognized by Business Week Magazine as one of the safest communities in Virginia, and the best town in Virginia for the mobile entrepreneur. And we intend to share this great news through our media resources and continue to highlight the city's outstanding quality of life and its ever-increasing importance to a growing number of business entrepreneurs. Second, we're pleased to acknowledge the recent Daily Press editorial of June 6th, which highlighted the city's strong partnership with its citizens and community groups. As the article noted, the citizens of Pecosin have demonstrated they're willing to become partners with their city council and city administration in order to accomplish their mutual goals. Additionally, the editorial pointed out that when it comes to city-community relations and collaboration, Pecosin is in many respects a shining example of how to do it right. Finally, as council is aware, the city's theater promotion campaign was launched on Friday, May 24th, in seven theaters across the region. The campaign consists of two 30-second spots prepared by award-winning producer and videographer Angela Ward Costello, utilizing high-definition aerial footage. The spots highlight the city's fantastic water access and its residential opportunities. The spots are rotated weekly and will run for 12 weeks, capturing one of the busiest movie-going times of the year. As noted in this slide, an article detailing the initiative appeared in the Daily Press on June 3rd. As a companion element to the theater promotion, a website, enjoyvirginia.com, was created to support the anticipated interest in the theater spots. We're happy to report to you this evening, thus far, more than 1,200 visits to the website. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Brad?
Could I just note something for people watching at home? I've had several people ask me where they could see copies of our videos. There are several ways to get to it, but if you note on the top of that header where it says video, if you click on that, there are our first endeavor, the 1.0 video and the two versions, the 2.2, longer videos, the one focusing on the water and the one on the community, are, they're all there for folks to see.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, council. Anything? Dave, on behalf of council, thank you and your staff for doing such an outstanding job in the area of economic development over the last, what, two years? I think we've been at this. Your staff's to be congratulated. I think we have come so far in two years, not only from, hey, these are nice accolades, but where it really counts, where you're out talking to the businesses in the community or talking to the citizens. I really feel like there's an era of excitement within our city about where we're heading, and that is all thanks to you and your staff. Okay? So thank you very much.
Mayor, I'll pass that on. Thank you very much.
You can deflate his head tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll give him such a hard time, I think I'll let him go two days.
That does it for the special presentations, and now is audience for visitors. If anybody would like to address council on any subject, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 28th, 2013.
Second. Motion made, and second, that we approve the meetings of the regular meeting of May 28th. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and the work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes of the work session of May 28th, 2013.
Second. Motion made, and second, that we approve those also. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next, we move into new business, and the first item here is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a consultant contract for the Pecosin Museum Tom Hunt Store grant. Randy, would you like to start this?
I would be pleased to. The item before you, council members, is the next step in the process, which will ultimately result in the Tom Hunt Store being located to the museum property safely set back down in a manner that is functional, and then they will begin the restoration of that building. This particular contract is the specific plan to pick it up, to transport it, set it back down, and stabilize it, and is a precondition of a later bid process, which will actually be to move it and to resettle the building. It is paid for out of grant money. This grant has been with us for quite some time, and this is the next step towards getting it done.
Questions, Randy, before I ask for a motion? Is there a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, pass a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Weber Design, PC, Brandon Currents, architects for consulting services for the Tom Hunt Store grant from the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Second. Motion made, and second, that we approve this resolution for that move, or for that planning of that move. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is a resolution accepting certain streets into the city of Pecosin's transportation system.
Mr. Mayor, this item is to accept into the system and therefore make eligible for us to receive state support maintenance payments for these road segments. As you know, we spend a fair amount of time when we can cross-checking old lists. These are road segments have actually been on the ground and being maintained, answered some time, and for reasons that I can't quite fathom, we just missed these small fragments in the past, and this should bring us up to date. I commend both public works and engineering for going back the cross-checking yet again.
Well, thank you for, thank you for bringing this forward and for doing the audit, because like I said, what we find when we do things like this is some surprises, and just for everybody to aware, there are some surprises on us, the council, that these were not already in the maintenance system. But this is a great move forward, so is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution accepting certain streets into the city of Pecosin transportation system.
Second. Motion made, and second, that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments?
Can we, can we predate this and get some back payment?
I'm not sure it would be enough, would be enough to risk the state audit.
Approximately, how much do we get per mile of road?
Excellent question, and I cannot recall. Teresa, do you remember? How much is the state maintenance per mile for secondary roads? It's in that neighborhood. 16,000 per lane mile.
How often?
Once a year, annually.
This is about a mile and a half of road.
I think that, that sounds right. Let us confirm that, that we'll stick it in the weekly report for you this week. I'll be fine. Get you that actual number.
Okay. So we, had a motion made, and second, I don't believe we took a vote on that yet. So Judy, please.
Okay. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
I have a family on one of those roads and think it appropriate me to abstain.
Okay. Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero with one abstention.
That's fine. All right. The next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the VPI Extension Service, York County, and the city of Pecosin for extension services.
Mr. Mayor, at your place is the second iteration of our ongoing reestablished relationship with Extension in York County. There are two things to bring to your attention. As you may recall, last year, when we re-entered into that agreement, we essentially crafted a deal with the assistance of Extension, but essentially the partnership was between York County and ourselves. This document transcends that and sets the stage for what will now be a York-Pecosin Extension Office. So it's formalized. We're, it's, we're not now simply participants in York, but actually a York-Pecosin office. The other thing to point out is that our costs are slightly lower than they were last year, so moving in the right direction. Mr. Norton is here. If you have a question for him, he is the gentleman that has helped us. He was the architect to help us reemerge into the program and has been a good ally for our citizens throughout the year, and will continue to take the lead.
Anybody have any specific questions?
I have one.
Come on up.
I think I heard recently, right now, we currently offer Master Gardener certification, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a certification that we offer, something about a naturalist?
There is a Master Naturalist program that is joint with Extension and three or four other state agencies. And that is a training that happens sort of independent of our office. They do it, two different groups in our area, one in Williamsburg, one down here in Newport News, but it would be open to Pecosin citizens as well.
It would be open to us, okay.
Absolutely.
I had some people inquiring about that. Master naturalist is the...
Yeah, anything like that, you can just send them straight to my office, and we'll help them through it.
Great. Thank you very much.
I was going to ask you to come on up anyway, so I'm glad you did. Is there anything you'd like to say to citizens? We're just thrilled to be part of this, this joint effort between us and York County and the Virginia Department.
We're very happy that you folks, you know, brought us back in, because we're being able to do a lot of exciting things here. We're starting a learning garden at the Pecosin Museum. We are able to provide services that we weren't able to provide before. I've made several house visits. We have had a pruning clinic here. We're also going to have a lawn clinic here in Pecosin. And we're able to offer a lot of the services that we already had to Pecosin immediately, rather than having Pecosin citizens wait for them. I also was helping with the radiation ingestion pathway training thing that they did before. They always want an extension agent, but we couldn't be here because of the lack of an agreement, but I was able to sit on that this past week. So that's not as exciting as some of the other things we do, but it is a service we do provide to the city, and we're just happy to be back here.
Hey, we're happy to have you back and appreciate your coming to see us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on this?
Mayor, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between the Virginia Cooperative of Extension, County of York, and City of Pecosin together.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we adopt this resolution. Questions or comments? Judy, I'm sorry.
Do we have a 4H program here in town? I know we used to in the past.
About the 4H, is there...
Yeah, so 4H is an extension program. We, I'm not, I'm a horticulture agent, we don't have a 4H agent, but we do do a number of 4H programs, including camp. We have a horse club, we have a shooting club that we support, and we also have an environmental education club that we support. So we, anything we do with youth is 4H. We also have a 4H moms program that we actually have 23 kids, six of which I believe are citizens of Pecosin. And what that is, is we teach them how to grow moms, and we teach them how to sell the moms, we teach them how to market themselves well, and they all seem to enjoy it very well, so that's been as exciting as...
Thank you again. Okay. All right, we have a motion made, and second, and no other comments or questions. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the implementation of facility and program fee increases for parks and rec beginning July 1st.
Mr. Mayor, I move an option of a resolution authorizing the implementation of Parks and Recreation Program and Facility Fees beginning July 1, 2013.
Second. A motion made, and second, that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments?
I have one question. Dave, the, I know that the Pecosin Lacrosse Club and the, I believe it's the Soccer Club are working through the process of getting the discount.
Yes, ma'am.
Did the other ones that are already receiving the discount, do they already have, have they worked through the same process, or are they just grandfathered?
They're grandfathered, and yes, ma'am. The process is fairly recent, the past couple of years, that we, that we prepared the documents for, for other groups to be recognized in that fashion.
That's all? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion made, and seconded. Anything else? Seeing nothing, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Viop telephone system and an ordinance appropriating the necessary funding.
Mr. Mayor, as you recall, this was a subject of discussion, a meeting last month. This is the voice-over IP system, and the transfer and resolution are related to expenses in FY14. You see a long list of transfers from. This is re-appropriating the money we expect to save out of each of the individual departments to reinvest back into the system, with addition of $8,000 spending out of our small contingency fund, just not to be confused with the fund balance.
Okay.
And we're here to answer questions, see if you have any.
Okay, so we have a resolution and an ordinance. Is anybody prepared to make a motion on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with IPC Technologies, Inc., for VoIP equipment.
Second. Okay. A motion made, and second that we approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with IPC. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and now for the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Second. Motion made, and second that we approve the ordinance also on the same subject. Questions or comments?
Can I just, just one thing? I came in late to the meeting last week, but this is a, a long-term money maker saver for the city, half a million dollars over 10 years. So, I just, for everybody that's out there watching and listening, this is a, not only a great, a good move, it's a great move, so I just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you very much. Any others, any questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
And the next item under new business is an ordinance making various appropriations and transfers.
Mr. Mayor, to briefly summarize, all budgets are planned and they change during the course of the year, and sometimes they, they change because things aren't going well or didn't plan well, but that's not typically the kind of appropriations that, that we experience here. Five of the six of these are sort of good news or bad news turned into good news. First is an appropriation of approximately $7,700, additional donated funds to the library. Second, $5,000 grant from the Department of Emergency Management. That helps us with our Code Red program, that's how we partially pay for that. The third is the bad news into the good news, which is insurance proceeds coming back relating to the fire at the Public Works Building. The, the fourth item is an increase to the budget for special events for this year, which is offset by the same amount of revenue. It's a, it runs as a mini-business, they only get to expend more than they have when they bring in more than they expected. The, the fifth bullet, and it sort of goes back to something we discussed a few minutes ago, is an additional allocation of state highway maintenance funds. That's the money that we use for both road resurfacing, any, any roadwork really, and also roadside ditching and drainage. The last one is an item that we discussed in the budget, is, pertains to the city of Pecosin's responsibility for the York County Courthouse Roof Replacement Project, and this basically shores up essentially the balance of our commitment for that project. Teresa's here, if you have more questions.
Questions of council?
Okay, anybody prepared to make a motion on this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2012 and 13.
Okay. Second. Motion made, and second that we approve the ordinance. Questions or comments from council? Not, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
And the next, and, next and final item under new business is a resolution making appointments to various boards and commissions, and these particular ones will be to the Colonial Behavioral Health System, Thomas Nelson Board, and Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the various boards and commissions for the Colonial Behavioral Health, Stella M. Quinn, whose term will expire June 30th, 2015, Thomas Nelson Board, Everett Jordan, whose term will expire June 30th, 2017, and to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, W. Eugene Hunt, Jr., and J. Randall Wheeler, whose terms will expire June 30th, 2015.
Okay. Okay, motion made, and seconded that we approve the resolution with those names inserted. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Comments of the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two thanks this evening. First, and I don't mean to steal any of you all's comments, but I want to commend it a slightly different way. Last Thursday, we had a ribbon-cutting event to celebrate four new businesses coming to the city, and you all are probably going to speak to that, but what I'd like to do is just take a moment and thank you on behalf of the staff, all of you. We had all seven council members there. You know, I'm, I'm always going back to the, to the ribbon-cutting. We had a Divine Boutique, and the woman that owned it said to me, you know, we've, this is the third business we've opened in Virginia, it's the first time anybody's ever owned it. I don't even notice, but you were all there, and we truly appreciate it. And the second and last thing I had, I just wanted to draw folks' attention to a wonderful new resource and piece of our history. It's called Images of America Pecosin, a new book put together by the museum and Historical Society, and it is available for purchase through either the museum or the Historical Society. That's the preferred way to get the book because they get all the proceeds. You can also get it on Amazon and places like that, they get a much smaller cut, so it's a nice way to support our museum and Historical Society. They split the proceeds, so it doesn't matter which one you buy it from, but even more importantly, it is a wonderful, wonderful history, photographic history of this city, and I commend it to everyone. If you haven't seen it, if you'd like to look it in, you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Corrigan, Bud, anything this evening?
Well, first off, I'd like to offer my congratulations to the Eagle Scouts who won their awards, and for Dave Callis for his excellent work, and this, and the city staff for excellent work in advertising that city and showing the nation and world what Pecosin is about, and the third thing is to apologize for the accidental sound effects.
Okay. All right, Tracy.
I just wanted to remind people that tomorrow is the DMV To Go, so hopefully we'll have, isn't it tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Morning, okay. So, hopefully we'll have good weather for that.
You wanna, you wanna explain what that is just a little bit?
The DMV To Go is when the Department of Motor Vehicles brings a trailer to our parking lot here out back, and they offer full services that we don't offer normally at our DMV Express is the one that's in the building. So, you can get your driver's license renewed and get your veteran's card, and I'm not sure what other things, but it's been, I know people who've used it, and we're very happy with it.
Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate it. Dr. Vernal?
Well, I want to echo some of the comments, particularly the congratulations to the Eagle Scouts for the past three or four years now. Mr. Garcia's asked me to address a group of his students who are scouts who are working towards that, and it's really interesting to hear some of the questions that they have. Let me say that they generally assume we have a lot more authority than we do, but it certainly is refreshing to meet with those young people and hear their interests and concerns. The other thing, just congratulate Dave and his staff for all the things that have happened in the recent weeks. It certainly has shone a bright light on Pecosin, which makes us all very proud of that.
Thank you very much, buddy.
A couple of things. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Mel Linsley on the Bay Day cleanup, very successful event. Had a lot of people show up, and we, and Dave Callis was there also, and collected some interesting items. Had a whole lot of tires, but it was very successful. Also, I'd like to remind people, Randy reminded us, which I never knew until I just happened to punt it by accident, that our local DMV can issue fishing license, hunting licenses, and register your boats. So, they, they take care of all of that now, so just like to remind everybody of that. I was not aware of it. And since we're not having a second meeting, I'd like to remind the citizens of the Food Bank, which will be the fourth Tuesday, I believe it's the 25th of this month, and I believe the Lions are helping this time. I think that's right.
I think it is.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Henry?
Yeah, just reiterate what everyone said about the scouts, when they talk about 2% of scouts become Eagles, we have 16 in this community, that's quite impressive. Now, we're in the, we're in the movies, we're in the book business, and we have two young men, Mr. Chad Penner and Kyle Crockett, want to congratulate their coaches through the years, their family, and those two guys for one of them being drafted by the Oakland A's and up and by the Cleveland Indians, so Pecosin is in the news. We're, we're all over the place. Good stuff.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I think we've, we've picked it all up. I will tell you, it, there's not, never a week that goes by when I read the minutes or the weekly report from the city staff, that I don't recognize what a great staff across the board that we have within our city. There's accolades in here today, and, and they are well-deserved, and Mel Linsley, that was brought up. Thank, thank him for that. Jim Beach, the city inspector, how many cities do you get a city inspector who is, is called out for superior services in jumping into something within just a couple hours of a phone call? I will tell you that there's one that I feel like we need to recognize and announce, and that's the retirement of Donna Garrison, and Donna has been a, basically, a, a very solid employee in the treasurer's office, and she's gonna be retiring at the end of the month after 20 years of service. I can tell you, there's people that come to that, that window that just want to talk to Donna, so, and I appreciate her service, and I wanted, because we're not going to get another chance in June to call that out, but to recognize her for her service to our city. And I wanted to thank all of the employees that showed up for the Mayor's Cup Blood Drive, we, and for Teresa for overseeing the Mayor's Cup Blood Drive now for three years, and none of these things are something that's in the job description. These are extra things that staff does on a regular basis, as well as council and the great things, like I said, all of this stuff happens because council has a vision, and I will tell you, I'm pleased to work with every member up here for their vision and